Okay, Mayor, I think we can go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome everyone to the Owl Palms Emergency City Council Meeting. Today is Monday, May 4th at about 5:00 PM. This is a virtual meeting. I hope everybody knows to be watching YouTube and miss it, you can always go back and watch it on YouTube for a rerun. Our agenda today is a special meeting. And I'm going to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, would you call real call, please?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Popsen.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Thank you very much. On their agenda, we have one item to consider tonight or this afternoon. Consideration of amendments to the emergency ordinance 2020-04, including changing the expiration date for the entry checkpoints and access restrictions. Consideration of road closures on Ocean Boulevard between Pavilion and J.C. Long Boulevard to allow restaurant outdoor overflow seating until governor lifts the restrictions on indoor dining and other measures proposed for the safety and public health of the city of the Owl Palms.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for meeting again. I'd like to first address one of these issues because of the governor's mandate and the guidelines for restaurants and to have their tables eight feet apart. It's an impact on them. They have had the need to set up tents and outside. And that actually is in violation of one of our codes. And so it's actually code. It's Section 5-4-38, Section 5A and B. The, in order for those restaurants to fulfill and meet the demands or guidelines of the governor's restrictions for outdoor dining, we need to address our ordinance and basically list lists that we can allow some of the outdoor tents and establishments available. And also, I'd like to discuss allowing some of those restaurants to be able to have sidewalk seating in front of their establishments as well. Not necessarily shutting down Ocean Boulevard, not shutting down Pavilion, not shutting down those areas. But those restaurants, when they do have overflow, they can have seating within that meets the standards outside the restaurant. So, right out of the gate, I'll go ahead and like to make, go ahead and make a motion. We allow that restaurants be allowed to have seating outside their, outside their establishments on the sidewalk.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
And with that, Desiree, could you or Douglas talk about the, what we would need to do? Basically, it's, we've done this before with special events. We would have to classify this as a special event established or special event so that restaurants can have some seating right outside their establishment. So it'd have to be where we can go through and allow that to occur.
Yes. So to answer your question, Councilmember Buchanan, currently, the city code prohibits establishments from having outdoor seating or outdoor sales unless they are granted a special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Or city council could also authorize it as city-sponsored or city-sanctioned within a time period. I don't think that we could have an open-ended period for a long time. But the city could determine that it's in this, you know, best interest and city is willing to sanction it. Then they would be able to do that, what you were proposing.
Okay. So as part of my motion, I'll go ahead and, as with all emergency orders that come in that are handed out from the governor, they last about two weeks or 15 days. And just say if we can go through and allow these restaurants to have outdoor seating on the sidewalks outside of, directly outside of their establishment for the next 15 days.
Do I hear a second to that?
Well, I'm just, it was just, I saw my original motion.
Okay, you just clarified.
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure, are there any concerns from staff at all that we need to take into consideration? Desiree?
Yeah, certainly, Ocean Boulevard, like Councilmember Buchanan said earlier, 10th to 14th is owned by the city. So there are liability concerns if something happens on those sidewalks that the city needs to be aware of. Nothing different than what we have now. But I do want to ask, while we're on the topic about concerns, we did talk about this earlier and Chief Cornet was going to address the alcohol use and sales on the public right-of-way, contacting the Department of Revenue and SLED to get some answers on what we would need to do in order to allow that. Chief, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. I have not been able to make contact at this time. My concern with it really was the, most of these businesses have an on-premise license. The concern would be if they're outside of theirs, just making sure that they would legally be doing so. And on the sidewalk, we would want to include if they are sitting with their meal and consuming alcoholic beverages. If it's on the sidewalk, that would need to be included in our, or the ordinance change that council puts in place. If you did it as a special event, it would fall under the same type of category. We would need to make sure that the boundaries were clearly defined and that a sign was in place that told individuals where they could not go any further with their alcoholic beverages.
Our suggestion would be that the motion includes specific language that it allows them to put chairs and umbrellas in the area adjacent, immediately adjacent to their property. And I think, I think we would be fine with that.
I think I heard Councilmember Buchanan say that. Anyway, yeah, Councilmember, where am I at here, Pounds?
Hey, me, yeah. Hey, Ryan, I think it's a great idea. And I'd reached out to Desiree after last meeting to see if we could have some kind of a, you know, mini campaign for this week to support our local restaurants somehow, some way and get a list of, you know, who is open and times and stuff. And as usual, Desiree was already down a path and ahead of me. But I guess, Ryan, thinking through, you know, just ocean lets just those oceanfront restaurants do that, right? I mean, I'm wondering, is there, you know, could we take it even to another level to say, to use one of the municipal lots potentially and let any restaurant on the island set up a shop? I mean, is that, I mean, I hate to advantage one over the other, but could we give everybody a shot at some tent dining, so to speak? I mean, what are you thinking about that?
Well, I've, I've reached out to, as much as I could, to all the, all the restaurants and businesses. They were fine with that. Even, I mean, other places absent of Ocean Boulevard. And they, like, even like within the Harris Cedar shopping area, they, they're, they're kind of content with what they're doing right now. They're really good, they wanted to take out. But this would allow some of these other places to have overflow if needed. And they can still do overflow in those areas as well. But, but to allow to, you know, even, even if the boathouse perhaps wanted to set up tents in their parking lot, we, I mean, we need to allow them to do that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, Boathouse kind of has a nice setup, you know, of their own. Yeah, I'm thinking about some of the others that don't sit on Ocean Boulevard and might want to participate. It'd be hard logistics for them. I mean, I get that with the food and stuff, but I'm just curious. And then the second thing, I guess, part of why I like the municipal lot. You know, I know we all saw the email traffic from the Palm and other places, the condo folks right there. Are we going to, you know, block their access in and out, do you think? Or how do we?
No, no, that's a, it's basically the idea, and they got brought up, was, is shutting down Ocean Boulevard like we had before. And that's, and that's, that's not the intention. The intention is to basically go through and allow the restaurants that are in the area that have the ability to have overflow, if the, you know, because of the eight foot or eight feet in between tables, if they need to, they can have, even if it's a couple electric tables outside, they have the ability to do that. And whether, and it's not, it's not exclusive to Ocean Boulevard. I mean, we can do a, a city, citywide event, basically, and say, restaurants are allowed to set up tents in their, you know, in their parking lots or the Marina can, or the Salt Works can set up a tent outside or in order to meet the guidelines that the governor's put out to allow them to have overflow.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Mayor, sorry, one more real quick. And what about our, what about the restroom situation? Are we opening back up the city restrooms or restaurants going to have their restrooms open? I mean, that's going to be a lot of people in a small area. Desiree, any, or Chief, who knows that answer?
I do. The public restrooms are not currently opened. Our plan was to reopen those once the checkpoints are lifted. We are trying to address a wrinkle that happened today with the current attendant for the public restrooms. Donnie and Robert Acero are already ahead of me and have gotten quotes from cleaning and janitorial services to step in. But currently, the attendant who is, who has been responsible for maintaining those restrooms is no longer able to do so. So it may take us about another week. And Donnie's shaking his head, but I'll talk to Donnie afterwards. It may take us some time to be able to reopen. Okay, good.
Yeah, so how does that factor in if we're going to, again, I think it's a great idea, but how's that going to support that volume? Because again, our restaurant, restaurant, restroom's going to be open or not?
There's no restriction on those.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
I mean, I disagree. I want to make sure, well, first of all, we all want to support our restaurants and businesses and encourage the community to do so. And if this helps facilitate that and, and make things easier, I think that there's, you know, wide support for that. I want to make sure that we're covered as far as safety. And maybe we can incorporate some language in there if, if it's necessary to make sure that we're not liable for, as Desiree was talking about, any potential mishaps. But otherwise, yeah, encourage that and encourage getting the restroom situation handled as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Yeah, in regards to what Councilmember Pounds said, I'm fully supportive of doing something with the city parking lot. But we've had a barrage of emails today from residents. And I'm, I want to do what we can to support the restaurants. But I think we owe it to the residents of that area as well to weigh in on this issue and respond to the liability questions and have a holistic, complete plan, not try to do things in pieces. So while we want to go ahead and vote on this, we're still having discussions on checkpoint when we open coordinated efforts. And, you know, regardless of what we do, we're going to put a strain on the public safety officers. And I just think we're, we're a little bit out of order and not taking in the overall considerations. I mean, considerations, the liability, alcohol licensing, impact on the police force, what the other communities are doing are all part of this conversation. So I think there's things we can do to encourage support and use of the, of the restaurants within the community and outside the community. But let's, let's have a comprehensive plan. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Perfect. Yeah, I'd love to do that. What's the comprehensive plan?
I don't know, it's your motion.
No, I wasn't sure if you were planning.
Plan, you know, having liability, having public safety addressed, having restroom facilities and having, you know, personally, I don't, you know, it just feels to me, we keep using these emergency meetings to exclude the public from conversation. I know it's not purposeful, but I don't know about the rest of you. I have a ton of emails today, many from Front Beach residents or those that live on the Front Beach, asking what are we doing? And I think they have, have and deserve a right to weigh in on issues that affect their immediate residency and community. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not against the restaurants. I mean, honestly, if we had all these issues resolved, sidewalk cafes, I mean, they're all over the world. They're wonderful. But we've got a lot of issues in front of us. And I will make one other comment. I mean, these aren't all governor's restrictions. These are CDC guidelines right now that are telling everybody, you know, social distancing. Watching the news this morning, the restaurants that have done this, people want to come to these restaurants. They are, they have wait-in car orders waiting for tailor, table availability. Where are people going to go while they wait for these tables, Ryan? So, you know, there's a lot of questions here. And again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the residents or, or excuse me, to the restaurants or the ideas. But, but we need comprehensive approaches and well-thought-out plans to do any of these. And I'm willing to have as many meetings as it takes to get there quickly. But let's have a complete plan.
Right. I'm saying like, let's solve it. Let's just figure it out. I mean, as for the restrooms, you talk about restrooms, you know, the, the, the restaurants, restrooms will still operate and still work. Chief, as long as you're here, do you have any, I mean, do you have any concerns with this? Or like you said, it would be just outside the rest, the footprint of the restaurant? And just what other concerns you may have? So let's address this, address this now.
Sure. So for me, the only concern would be the alcohol outdoor. And if I understood it correctly, the intent is that they would be consuming alcohol with their dinner just like they would if they were sitting inside. Not that we are allowing a large block party. I think as, as long as we stipulate that, it's really no different than when they're inside and our officers that are on patrol can, can check that. It might be important to make sure that the ordinance specifies that so that we don't just have a large block party and we would still go through and enforce social distancing as well.
Thank you. Councilman Streetman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm in favor of this in regards to the sidewalk seating for restaurants. And I don't have a problem with it. I look at, well, back in a different day before the pandemic, my wife Deborah and I attended Second Sunday on King Street just about every month. And I just don't, I just don't see we're putting something in place for something like this, much as they've done on King Street down in Charleston, how it would be that difficult to do. You know, people sit at their tables, they could have a drink in the designated areas. The alcohol is not allowed walking up and down the street. They usually had, you know, it's been my experience, it'd be one or two uniformed cops in that stretch of King Street would be walking up and down, you know, interacting with people. And quite honestly, in five or six years of attending Second Sunday on King events, I never saw an issue at all. So I was concerned and I have seen the emails from some of the residents, you know, with the condos and the villas. They were real concerned about ingress egress for themselves, but I think we've kind of answered that by, because we're not going to be blocking ocean off. So I feel pretty good about it, but I don't, I don't, I don't think we have to spend a lot of time with a comprehensive plan over and above the risks that are involved with the CDC guidelines and the spacing and that sort of thing, you know, making sure that that's in place. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, Mayor, sorry.
Yes, sir.
One more. Hey, Ryan, and I know that this is just a draft of the ordinance at this point. Do we, do we need to tweak that language to make it broader across the island for all the other restaurants? Or what, what did you say earlier? Sorry.
It is, I talked to Desiree about it. And basically, it's a city, city-sponsored event. And we can have it based, as Desiree, you can help me out with this. But we can have it incorporate the businesses on the island so that they are able to be out. I mean, because right now, you're not allowed to have accessory structures. Right. Side tents, what have you, right now. I just left the windjammer a little while ago to see how they're doing. They have tents set out in the, set out in volleyball courts, all, all far apart from each other, as does the dinghy, as does other restaurants that are trying to get everything in place. But right now, they're in violation of city code because of that. So, but if we incorporate, you know, there's a city-sponsored event and that they are doing their best and to meet the, the guidelines that were handed down from the governor and DHEC, then, you know, we can make that incorporate, incorporate in the island. That's right.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ward, anyone that Desiree recommend? Just a good.
Yeah. As far as the, um, the Front Beach Ocean Boulevard, there's only one restaurant that's really impacted. That would be Pappy's. And to the best of my knowledge, because everybody else has, you know, open spaces on the ocean side. I talked to Ryan this afternoon about the median and it looks like we're kind of dropping that. Like they have in Barcelona, Spain, the Las Ramblas, where they have the restaurants on the Boulevard. And then they have traffic going on either side. But in the median, they have, they serve quite, quite a few people. It's probably a quarter mile long. I think the only restaurant that would, could possibly take advantage of that would be Pappy's. So it's really not that big of a deal to me. But I'd like to see it move forward, just make it a special event. We do it twice a year down there. Anyway, that's it.
City Administrator, Desiree?
Yes. So I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing one that there is some desire to allow the restaurants who are in Front Beach between 10th and 14th, the ability to put tables and serve food adjacent right in front of their building, right in front of their establishment. And also a blanket exception or yes, exception to the section of the code that prohibits outdoor sales for those that are willing and want to, to do it in order to comply with the restaurant guidelines for outdoor dining. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
Okay.
Clarification, Desiree or Julia, on our city-sponsored events and also the fact that we own the streets and the sidewalk down there, we do have insurance already.
Yes, the city, yes, the city is insured?
Okay, so this, you know, that question came up early, so I'm just trying to clarify that. And what Rusty said about, you know, the Second Sunday downtown, the street, I thought that was an incredible idea. You know, just to kind of bring the life back down to Front Beach. But.
I think that that seems like more of a long-term approach to outdoor dining on Front Beach. I think for the near future, we can certainly make some accommodations for folks, you know, to be able to expand their seating arrangements. I agree. I think that that sounds like a wonderful idea. We can certainly work on some plans, some proposals of how that could work on the Owl Palms on that section of road.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Are, are we putting date certain or some language that says until such time, CDC? Or, you know, we, we didn't talk end game here. We have no idea when this is going to end. So.
In the, in the motion was for the follow of the governor's emergency order directive, basically. It has to be reestablished every 15 days. And so basically, I said, it's just for the next 15 days.
But is there, is there certainty that it's the governor's order or the CDC guidance that we're following? And I truly don't know the answer to that, so.
So the, the governor's executive order 2020-31 allows restaurants to offer outdoor seating and then make some recommendations on how restaurants could go about doing that safely. And they do quote the CDC and they also recommend restaurants to follow the Restaurant and Lodging Association guidelines, which are the guidelines that dictate that seats or tables should be eight feet from each other and a long list of other recommendations for restaurants.
So, so, so the question, and again, it's, it's intended to be positive, not negative. There is always, the governor can lift his orders and we're still left with CDC guidance. So should there be some language in the motion that says, in the event the, you know, probably going to say it wrong, but in the event the governor lifts his orders, yet the CDC guidance remains in place that we will continue to follow CDC guidance?
I think you're making it more complicated for us. Julia?
We can address it if, if, if it happens. I mean, obviously, we can come back to it. So I'm, I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
It could be included as an amendment. I don't, I don't think.
No, I mean, to, to, to the mayor's. We don't know if that's going to happen. So I don't want to, I don't want to put language in that may be unnecessary at this point.
That is, no, and it makes sense. I mean, CDC is an advisory body, not a governing body. So we will take that action based on that. And they advise, you know, the federal government as well as the states on how, how policies should be set.
Councilmember Moy, I don't see you at all. So I don't know if you have any questions or not?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I think it's pretty obvious move forward. It sounds like most of council's in agreement as well, but no questions, no concerns. The chief and the city administrator have it all underway.
Okay, anyone else before we vote? Okay.
City Clerk? The motion, the motion is to allow for outdoor seating for restaurants directly outside of their own space for the next 15 days.
Thank you very much.
I want to make sure we are clear that there was nothing else that needed to be added to that. That's good. All right.
As a city-sponsored event, Desiree, you think?
Yeah, yeah, it's city sanctioned or city-sponsored.
Yeah.
Because of alcohol. Okay.
But as a city-sponsored event, all right. Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Oh.
I saw him say aye. And Mayor Carroll? Thank you all in favor.
Okay, moving on. Checkpoints on the connector. While here? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, well, I asked the mayor yesterday if we could schedule this meeting to address the checkpoint issue and accelerate removing them. And had also been talking with our city administrator about that. You know, at, at this point, the cons of the checkpoint outweigh the pros. And we can add to the list of the cons today based on the correspondence that we received from the county, which we haven't had a chance to discuss. But, but I'm, the cons also include exposure of our police as they deal with a high volume of people at the checkpoint. From what I've heard, a growing number of visitors have found creative ways to get around the process, not to the fault of our police department, but through some creative engineering of fake passes, I believe. And so they're getting through the checkpoint anyway, in which case it becomes more important that we have a stronger presence of police and monitoring, being able to have them monitor the beach and parking. So with the governor easing state restrictions and the county chiming in today, it's, it's time for us to move on to a new phase by eliminating the checkpoint and allowing greater access to our beaches and our business district, but with restricted parking to help facilitate social distancing and crowd control. And we need to do it sooner than later and provide the resources required for a smooth transition. I would like to hear a little bit more from our city administrator in a moment about how fast we can make that happen. I understand that the sheriff's department may provide us deputies at no cost to the city. And I think ideally, we'll have at least a day or two of a soft reopening, if not more, before the weekend, which we know will be busy. And I highly encourage our neighboring beach communities to follow suit. And we, we cannot wait to know that they're on the same page with this. I just hope that we can all be in this together. So I don't think this means we're, we're not back to normal. We're still in the middle of a pandemic with our state recording nearly 1200 new cases a week. If our council passes this relaxing of restrictions, which I believe we will, my message to our visitors, including our many friends and neighboring communities. uh, my message to our visitors, including our many friends in neighboring communities is please be smart for your sake and the sake of others and know that we cannot fully, uh, we cannot safely return to our usual spring and summer beach crowds. With the growing population in this area, that has started to mean thousands of people coming, especially on the weekends, so I just encourage this messaging that we need to practice social distancing. We need to respect our public safety officials and parking rules. Stay in small groups. Do not plan to come here to the beach and stay for the day. Enjoy a break here. Get some exercise, fresh air and sunshine to stay healthy, but leave space and time for others to, who also want to come here and do the same. We're not celebrating the end of the pandemic because it's not over. And, and we all need to remember that we're in this together and, um, you know, do what we can to keep each other safe.
Is there a motion?
Um, yes, so my motion is that we, uh, accelerate and based on our city administrators', um, recommendation or, you know, of how quickly we can do that. I, uh, think we need to have a conversation as well about parking. Um, but I'll just, I can simply make the motion that we accelerate the checkpoint, the removal of the checkpoint by, by Wednesday at the latest. Uh, but I'd like to hear more from our city administr- administrator.
Second.
Yeah, there's an motion on the table, okay. Oh, I think Councilmember Pounds?
Yeah, I mean, to me, before we get to specifics, I'd love to hear a little bit more how, I mean, everything you just said, Susan, was a thought where we left off on Saturday night after three hours. I'm not sure how we got from point A to point B of a new meeting. And I don't know who can speak to that. Well, I mean, the chief asked a week to come up with a plan. Desiree and crew had a really nice plan, a phased in reopening plan. All of that was on the table for us Saturday. And now we're kind of chucking all of that and saying, go faster. So I'm just curious how we got to here.
Well, I think we need to accelerate it. Um, and not just ask, when can this happen, but how can we make this happen faster? And, um, I, in talking with Desiree, it sounded like we could make this happen as early as Wednesday. And so, um, I, I, that's, I feel like it needs to happen sooner because I don't think the checkpoints are working for us. And I'm concerned that if we continue through the weekend, that we're working with a failed system. Um, and while our public safety officers have done a fantastic job and have rallied for us, I think that it hopefully will be a relief to them if we move past the checkpoints.
May I hear the motion, please?
The motion, the motion was to accelerate the removal of the checkpoint by Wednesday.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, I just, I'm with Councilmember Pounds. We specifically asked the police chief his recommendations. And he said, you've got to give me at least till Friday. The balance of the conversation was to act in concert with other beach communities so as not to overwhelm our public safety officers. Folly is not proceeding this way. Sullivan's Island has a meeting begin at six o'clock. We have no idea. We don't have a plan in place. And while I'm in favor of accelerating, I am strongly opposed to a meeting to rehash what we did on Saturday that's been labeled as stupid in the Post and Courier. I, I, I just, I'm honestly, I mean, we've been hammered by residents of this island in the last 24 hours, asking us to respect their health and safety. And yet we're willing to throw caution to the wind and understand that on Mother's Day weekend, without the other beachfront communities acting in accordance with us, just everybody come to the Isle of Palms, no worries. We're at the peak of the pandemic. Uh, you, you know, I, I understand the motion. I understand the intent. And I'm all in favor of when the chief has a plan that he puts in front of this council, not administration, that we look at that plan and act responsibly on behalf of the health and safety of the residents. So, you know, y'all know where I stand and, and I'm hoping that we listen to the residents of this island.
Okay, so Councilmember Smith, before you say anything, um, Chief Cornet, would you, um, reiterate the conversation we had today concerning the parking and some revisions to keep it easier for y'all?
Mayor, may I, may I just say something to clarify?
Well, she may.
Um, and Chief Cornet have been and have had multiple conversations and we obviously, obviously coordinate, um, everything that, that we do at staff level. Um, when the question was asked how quickly we can go ahead and how quickly the staff feels with lifting the checkpoints, the question came back as the requirement or the request from council to limit parking on Palm Boulevard. And that was the specific requirement or the specific ask from the, from the police department and administration for additional time to go ahead and deploy that. Um, that is not feasible to be done by Wednesday. If by Wednesday, city council wants to lift the restrictions, then we can limit parking on the municipal lot. Um, but we, which, and, and then I'll let Chief Cornet speak after he had his conversations with his staff about the pros and cons of, um, actual restricting, restricting access on Palm Boulevard and the finger streets between Third and Ninth Avenue. Um, and some thoughts on that. But I just want to clarify, I mean, the checkpoints can be lifted at any time. It's just what the expectation is on the restrictions on parking. Um, because once the restrict, once the checkpoints are lifted, the personnel will be directed to enforce parking and enforce social distancing on the beach. Um, I think that the wrinkle comes with the, the expectation of blocking ha- one side of Palm Boulevard, which after our meeting, um, Saturday, when we had additional conversations, additional meetings with staff, some concerns were raised that we, um, that Chief Cornet will share with you all.
Thank you, Desiree. Chief?
Yes, so initially our parking plan, um, sounded like a great idea. And when we started looking at the feasibility of making it happen is when we ran into some of our concerns. We have had a overwhelming response of individuals that said that basically they don't care what's, what we're going to put in place. They're going to park where they want to park. Um, and that means that we would have to make something that is good and designed in a way to, to really try to limit that parking. The other part of that is we would have to order fencing, which right now we're at the cost of $4,000 to get enough fencing just for Palm Bou- We can get a company to come in, kind of like those construction companies that come in and put cones and the barriers up. We could do that, but we're looking at $7,000 a week for that to take place. And if we just used our cones, then we have to station somebody and even with the fencing or the cones, we're going to have to station personnel every other block down Palm Boulevard. And if the restriction stayed in place for the ocean finger streets, we would have to place individuals up there permanently throughout until we decide that we're going to lift this. We'd have to have somebody there to keep people from parking. Otherwise, somebody's going to defeat whatever mechanism we have in place. And once one person does it, somebody else is going to follow suit. And then we're going to have an issue where even if they did comply with these, these people that have traveled are going to find somewhere to park. They're going to be parking on streets that are further back. And then we'll be getting calls for those, which will move our personnel from where they were assigned to deal with those other parking complaints. Uh, it's just, we looked at Palm Boulevard. If we did every other block, we're looking at about nine officers or nine personnel just to be there to control how many people are coming. And that's for however long we did for a day, seven to seven or, or whatever. And then however many days we did in a row, or in a row until it calmed down, which would be a while if we were the only community to open our beaches. And so that was where the concern came in. The easiest approach for the police department in all our actuality is to just let it go and adhere to the parking plan that we've done every year since then and let us aggressively address any violations for parking or for beach violations of whether it be alcohol on the beach, smoking on the beach, social distancing, uh, keep moving. Let us aggressively address those. We can better utilize our personnel and give them a little bit of a break to do that if we take the checkpoint down. And if we do that, waiting till Wednesday gives us the ability just to go ahead and get our personnel in order so that we have them staffed the appropriate way to address it.
Thank you, chief. Um, any questions? Councilmember Pounds, then Councilmember Streetman after Pounds.
Yeah, I mean, chief, thank you, Mayor. You're kind of making the point. You know, we walked away Saturday night with a plan. So that plan can't be put in place from a parking standpoint, right? So now we want to rush. I, I mean, this is what I voted against Saturday. I didn't vote against the restaurants. I didn't vote against, uh, Mount Pleasant. I didn't vote against Somerville, contrary to all the clairvoyant people that are on social media. I voted against having a well-thought-out, logical, implementable plan that can be that your guys can, you know, have compliance with. You know, again, I think we need to talk about the levers that are around all this. We've got, you know, keep it moving on the beach. I'd love to talk about that because that takes your patrol people the way. I mean, this is kind of making the point to Randy's comment or Councilmember Bell's comment around, we need a comprehensive plan to make this happen. I'm all for getting rid of everything and going wide open if we can, but we have got to control the flow if we're not, now if we're not coordinating with Sullivan's and others, I'm just real concerned that it's going to be a free for all in the, in a bad way.
Thank you. Councilmember Streetman?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I share the same concerns that Councilmember, Member Pounds and also Bell shared as well so far. Uh, you know, because when we walked away Saturday night, we thought we had a plan in place to allow the chief to give him up to seven days to come back with us with the plan based on the criteria that we put in place, you know, on the finger streets and on one side of Palm, that sort of thing. So it's really disappointing that you're, if we move forward to this, this quickly, then we're just going to have to open it entirely up. And I, I'm concerned, I know the chief knows his staff. I, he's, he's reassuring us. He has the staff to take care of all of this. Plus, you know, patrol for safety on the beach. Then, uh, you know, I, I think we have to take his word for that, that he's got a plan in place for that. But I am concerned that we're walking away from the plan we had in place on, on Saturday to move forward in a thoughtful way to protect the safety and the health of our citizens, number one, and also any visitors that come out here. And, uh, and I gotta tell you, I mean, I live on Palm, I, you know, so that, you know, so I'm not trying to play NIMBY or anything with this. But, uh, on the other hand, the safety factors that we have on Palm Boulevard many times, particularly when we have very heavy crowds. We've all seen them. You know, where the children are excited to be here, they're going to be even more excited now. It's the parents, you know, or letting them out of the car, getting the chairs. Of course, we're not allowing chairs, but you're still going to be getting out with the floats and all this stuff. And, uh, you know, this, this, it's going to be a, a real safety, potentially a huge safety, uh, situation on Palm Boulevard and maybe some other parts of the island too. So I've just, I'm just disappointed that we walked away from that part of the plan. I want to get it open too. I mean, you know, we've said all along, if we have a plan, a good thoughtful plan, we want to get that checkpoint down as quickly as possible. And, uh, I don't know about people cheating through the, through the checkpoint. Every time I've gone through the checkpoint, almost every time, I've seen one or two cars turned around. So not everybody's getting through the checkpoint. Uh, but I'm, I'm sure that people are finding their ways around it, but, uh, uh, so anyway, that's, that's my point.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Councilmember Moy too has a question.
Okay, just do more, Councilmember Moy, because I don't see him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't, I don't have a question. Uh, I'll just make some observations. Uh, I think, uh, starting with, we should, as, as government and as councilmembers, try to be as consistent as possible. And I think everyone's trying to do that and, um, appreciate everyone from the community who, uh, acknowledges and appreciates the, the difficult position we find ourselves in. And I just want to make, there's a couple of observations if you'll, if you'll give me a little bit of levity, but, or, excuse me, a little bit of space. Number one is, uh, we are, what we're doing now is trying to prevent that second peak. We don't want, um, the 1918 loophole to be history repeating itself. Um, now, that said, when I talk about consistency, we, we've been asking the, the chief for his guidance on enforcement of social distancing guidelines. What I am hearing the proposal was being is not, um, hey, it's time to ease up on social distancing. I don't, I haven't heard anybody say that, and that's good because we haven't met the criteria for that. What I have heard is, um, you know, when this, when this pandemic first hit, we didn't know what, we really, you know, we had to react to the situation when we were dealt and the cards we were dealt. And at that point, um, the police chief and his staff and the city administration and all of our other departments, we were unsure of what to do with the influx of just much like every other community throughout the country. Now the police is telling us he's got a solid plan for enforcing social distancing. And at the end of the day, that's, that's what we're trying to do. And, you know, from what I've heard from the chief, he has a high degree of confidence that by Wednesday he would be able to implement it. So, you know, what we said on Saturday was the chief needs time to get a plan together. What we've heard from the chief now is due to shifting, um, conditions are just shifted learning and what we can do to the old plan, uh, that he's now, he's now feasible. So, um, from my standpoint, the consistency looks like taking the recommendations from our public safety in terms of what they can and can't enforce. And I'm hearing this is going to be the, the best way to enforce social distancing. Um, I, I don't want to diminish the concerns that we should have over the amount of crowds that are going to be coming to the beach. Um, I said this on Saturday, but Mother's Day is historically one of our busiest weekends. Um, and I think Councilmember's net encouragements were, were well made. Um, and I think to Councilmember Pounds' question about the keep it moving, I, I think the keep it moving, uh, and, and I'll ask the chief, maybe, maybe I will ask a question. Do you believe that the keep, the keep it moving will help you with enforcement or harm you? Because again, in the spirit of consistency, I'm looking for what's easiest to enforce in terms of ensuring that we are helping crowds remain socially distant because obviously we can anticipate a huge influx of, of people. Um, but if our chief feels confident that his team is going to be able to enforce the social distancing guidelines and there's going to be a zero tolerance policy, then I feel comfortable moving forward and accelerating the plan. So chief, I will put that on you in terms of the, uh, the keep it moving.
Um, I would say the keep it moving actually helps us to avoid the large groups gathering together. You know, if we just tell people they can sit, then we'll have people that are just going to sit in those same areas because they feel, they feel comfortable. If we keep everybody moving, we're less likely to have those groups. And for us on the beach, it's been easier for us to tell people to keep moving uh, because most of them are already doing it. We had several reports after our meeting on Saturday. Several residents reached out and mentioned that they had gone out to the beach just to kind of look after we asked for some eyes and ears. And their only complaint was that they felt they didn't see enough police officers out there, but they did say that they saw, um, while they saw a parking pickup, they saw most people moving about like they were supposed to and very little issues with people not following the keep moving ordinance. So overall, I think the keep moving is easier for us because it prevents, i- if it's followed, it will prevent the social distancing from being an issue. Um, and we have the ability with our vehicles to get on the beach and to patrol and I, I might reach out to, to Donnie and borrow a, a gator from him. He's let us use it in the past. We've always had good partnerships. So it'll help us to patrol the beach and out there and, you know, I, I feel confident that that is an easy maneuver for us to do.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes, I have a question for Julia. Is she here?
She's here.
Okay, last week, the governor's order 2020-16, it was immediate order from Best Duck and Tails, emergency access restrictions for public beaches and waters. Last week, he lifted those restrictions. Does that mean that includes beach entrance or island entrance checkpoints? Did he, did he limit those restrictions to the checkpoints or not?
No, he, he, he just talks about public be- beach access points.
But not traffic onto the island?
I mean, it specifically talks about access beach points. Uh, I'm, if that's what you're asking, I'm just looking at it right now, reading it to you in black and white.
Well, I'm just, do, want to make sure that, that there, the checkpoints are that were okay. So really, it's, you know, it's not complicated. Is, was he addressing those or not? In your opinion? The checkpoints? Which is the crux of why we're here.
I mean, if you want to get into an interpretation of what the governor is trying to address and whether or not our, our travel restrictions on the roads are within the terms of this order, we can certainly talk about that in an executive session.
Okay. Just, I sure would like to have a clearer picture. Just, I sure would like to have a clearer picture.
Councilmember Bell?
Just a quick comment. The one thing that I'm still not hearing from the chief, and I'll ask the same question we asked on Saturday. Consistency statement with, with Councilmember Moy, I agree. The thing we haven't discussed is us opening up ahead of other beach communities and having coordinated plan. And, um, all due respect to the chief, I, I, I don't think, you know, last summer was a little different than other summers. He hasn't seen what can happen. And, and in particular, we're the only beachfront community open. We don't have enough police officers. And the conversation last Saturday was we will get help from the other agencies if they have people available. Um, that, that's, that's a, that's a roll of the dice. We're at the top of the peak. So for everyone's benefit, and I'm not trying to lecture the council, uh, when we hit the top of the peak, you know, we started this, we, we had very few cases in Charleston County. The top of the peak means we've maximized and are now at the most amount of cases that we have. And we're going to talk about opening our beach only for the maximum amount of cases. Not meeting any government guideline that I've seen in any document so far, but let's just, let's just roll the dice on this. You know, who knows what Sullivan's going to do. Folly's already made their decision. They're not opening the beaches right now without a checkpoint. So we're, we are not consistent with what we said on Saturday. And Chief, I'll defer to you, but are, are you a hundred percent confident that this is a good move? We're, we're just going to open up Isle of Palms and it doesn't matter what Sullivan's and Folly Beach do.
I don't want to interpret whether I think it's a good move or not, but what I will tell you is you're one hundred percent correct. With, if we are the only beach that opens, we will have the crowds come to us. Um, and that's going to be whether we did that with a parking plan or we did it without a parking. Regardless, whichever one we choose, if we are the only beach that opens, we will be inundated with people. And we will have to address our staff to do so. And that's, that's kind of what, what we were here to talk about, or what I was talking about with the parking is that it's going to take more for me with that parking plan to get that in place. I could use less staff in a better responsive way if we open the beach without the parking plan. But we are, yes, without a doubt, if we are the only beach that opens, the one place to go, other than Myrtle Beach, which is also open, my understanding, but their crowds were not very big over the weekend either.
Thank you.
The other, the other concern that we had, and we talked about it at length this morning, is restricting one side of Palm Boulevard is not going to stop people from coming to the island. What we fear will happen is it's just going to push a lot of traffic to, into the neighborhood, um, into the residential areas adjacent to Palm Boulevard, and we may see an increased number of parking violations in those areas. Because, you know, we've seen it every summer and we think that this is going to be worse, um, because of there's so much pent-up demand. You know, we get somebody from my neighborhood in Park Circle, because I don't live on the island, who packs up their car and, um, is dead-set convinced that they're going to go to the beach and they get to the beach and they don't find a parking spot. You know, we, we do know that, that those folks will maybe risk getting a fifty-dollar ticket. And then we have more, more officers on the road enforcing parking within the residential neighborhoods. So I think that was another concern that came up, um, of our conversations of how to implement that parking plan that we discussed on Saturday. Um, and what would be some of the challenges that we could see or foresee of, um, limiting parking on, on Palm.
Uh, Councilmember?
Thank you. Um, I just want to address a few points that have come up. And first of all, uh, we did not actually take a vote on when we were going to remove the, the checkpoint. So it was conveyed and it's on the city's update, um, most from Saturday, that entry access restrictions and checkpoints would remain in place until Tuesday, May twelfth. So that in itself is, I believe, you know, reason for us having this meeting to specifically go ahead and accelerate that. Um, and otherwise, uh, you know, I think I can address in my motion with, you know, the parking situation from what the chief has passed along, it sounds like the, the really, only realistic way we can go is, is to just have the parking restrictions in the municipal lot without, um, having parking restrictions on Palm. It just sounds like it's too difficult and would divert attention from the real situation that we're trying to control, which is on the beach. Um, so those are, you know, my thoughts. Can, can, should I go ahead and amend my motion to reverse our previous, uh, what we passed previously on parking? Or should we do that separately?
Please explain a little bit better what you're saying, please, from my side.
Should I, uh, what, should we just take care of this and, and, and address? We pre, we did take action on parking recommendations at our last meeting. I, we could, I could include a reversal of those restrictions, um, in my motion? Or we could deal with that after? Okay, I have some advice from our administrator and clerk.
Mr. Mayor? I, I think for, um, I'll offer my perspective because, uh, the parking is a critical part of the chief's plan and, uh, uh, I think in this, for the sake of, of this to be able to pass, we need to ensure that his team is able to enforce the, all of the social distancing guidelines that we're trying to enforce. And if the parking isn't placed, the, the parking restrictions that we passed on Saturday are in place, he doesn't feel like he can do that. So I think it, it needs to be a part of it. So I, I don't know, procedurally, um, you know, I'd happy, I'd happily make a motion to amend this to, um, uh, remove any parking restrictions, um, to the land side of Palm Boulevard.
And also to Third through Ninth Avenue.
When you say remove them, do you mean not that the, what is the only parking restriction that you want then? That's
not.
Would it be the regular beach man, the beach parking plan that's already in place?
And, well, we did ask that the parking in the municipal lot be restricted to half. I think we should keep that in.
Councilmember begin.
I'm going to need clarification on exactly what he still wants in it, because I'm not, I'm not, I didn't quite get all that. The parking lot, the half the, okay, so you want to keep half the parking lot blocked off and you want to keep Palm Boulevard blocked off?
Um, if that's consistent with what the chief is asking for.
Oh, no.
And I get the
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Councilmember Buchanan, please.
Thank you. I think what we're trying to do, and the chief mentioned that the best way to enforce social distancing and not have the parking be a problem is to revert back to our, the, the city's, um, man, beach management parking plan. It's already been approved by the city. It's been approved by the state. It's been is to, is to, is utilize the city's beach management parking plan as well as decrease amount of parking in the city's municipal parking lot to decrease the volume of folks that might be congregating in that area.
Yes.
So is somebody making that an amendment?
That's what John made.
Okay, that, that's what I was trying to make. Thank you.
Okay, all right, good.
Ryan, you seconded it? Okay, discussion on the amendment about the original beach parking plan. Councilmember?
Yep. So what's happening with the county lot, I guess, or we can restrict the municipal? What, what's happening with the county lot, Desiree? Do, do we know that?
Yes. Yes, um, I again talked with the manager today and, um, they are planning on a full reopening in a week or two. And talking about opening up in coordination with the city of Isle of Palms lifting the checkpoints to opening just their parking lots and the beach access paths at fifty percent capacity. But they would not be staffed, they would not have any lifeguards, no changing rooms and no food and retail. So that has not yet been decided, but they're talking about doing that to help, to help the city spread some of the, you know, the, the, the residents or citizens that work, that are going to come, come to the island to go to the beach. Um, so only opening half of, half of parking and their beach access paths in coordination with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Streepman, I think you had a question.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, uh, I'm, I'm still not comfortable with this plan. I mean, I know that we're opening it up, you know, and saying, okay, this is where we normally do the parking, that sort of thing. I, you know, I, I, I really hesitate on this thing since it looks like, at this point anyway, we're the only barrier island around here that's going to be open. Uh, based on what we've heard from Folly today, and we don't know what Sullivan's going to do. And I understand what the chief said about Myrtle Beach, but keep in mind, the Grand Strand is the Grand Strand. I mean, that's, that's a long stretch of beach from Merle's Island all the way up to Little River. Uh, so it's very easy to have dispersed crowds in, in that area there, uh, and it's not the high season. Uh, but, uh, you know, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm still not comfortable that we, what we're, what we're talking about doing here is going to be in the best interest of our residents for their safety and for others that are coming across Mount Pleasant, North Charleston, or anywhere else to, uh, uh, visit with us. So uh, I'm still concerned about that, deeply concerned. Thank you.
Anyone else? Bell raised his hand first and then, and then Popsen.
Just the final comment, a reminder, the parking that we have available, because Ocean Boulevard is excluded pretty much, there's no parking from forty-second to fifty-seven. Talking about opening our beaches wide open for Twenty-first to Forty-second Avenue. And the only thing we're going to accomplish with social distancing and spreading is COVID-nineteen. I just, I, I, I cannot for the life of me understand how we can put our resident's safety secondary, um, while we're still at the peak of a pandemic. And it, it, this is very disheartening to me.
Okay, Council, I forget, Popsen I think was second, no, Smith.
Um, I, I didn't know whether we should go into executive session to discuss the letter that was sent to us by the county um, in terms of the legal ramifications of it. Because it relates directly to this issue.
Julia? I'm, I'm sorry. Do we, do you agree that we need to go into executive session to go into this letter that was sent to us by Charleston County concerning the governor's, number one, which was the rescinding the prohibition on access to public beach accesses for recreational purposes? He rescinded that. Do we need to go into executive session for clarification?
That's totally up to you guys. If you, uh, if Councilmember Smith wants to go in and, and she has a second, you vote, I'm happy to give you some insight onto any legal ramifications of the, uh, the letter that was received today by Elliot Summy.
I would like to make that motion.
Well, but you can ask one question real quick, Mayor, before we go there.
Yes, please.
So, Desiree, to your comment, I mean, if they're not planning to open up for a week or two full force, what, what difference does it make what that letter says?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. Um, I think that the letter was specific to the city's action on Saturday, um, in light of the executive orders. Um, initially, we thought that part of the impetus for this letter was that the county park was planning on opening Thursday and Friday of this week. But after talking to their manager, um, it doesn't, it's, it's not the case, particularly because, um, you know, they're still training lifeguards and staff.
Trying to get a plan in place? Great idea.
So they would not be opening until they said a week or two, as of right now.
Before we vote on executive session or not, Councilmember Popsen was trying to get a question in there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, all I was going to say is, uh, and I said this on Saturday, is, you know, back in March, the federal task force and the state said, hey, we need to close things down. And we followed their orders. And now they're both telling us we got to open things up. And so, um, I think it's just, uh, time to open things up. And Palm Boulevard, I write down it every day, three, four times a day. We've always dealt with parking on Palm Boulevard on both sides of the street every summer. So what's going to be any different, whether we do it today on the twelfth, uh, we're going to be in the same thing we do every summer. And once the parking spaces are gobbled up, then there's no place for people to come and they'll go back off the island. So just my two cents.
Thank you. Uh, now back to Councilmember Smith. Make a motion and go into executive session.
Yes, I'm making a motion to go in, into an executive session. Please help me with the
thirty, forty, thirty, forty dash. Give me a second.
Thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two.
Thank you, not forty dash four.
That, yes.
To receive legal advice.
To receive legal advice related to the letter that we received from, uh, County Council Chairman Elliot Summy today.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Um, are we in executive session?
No, not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Was a vote taken?
Sorry.
I need a vote. No, we need to have a vote.
Okay.
Ready?
Roll call.
Ryan had a question though, I thought.
I thought so too, but, um,
Yeah. I, I do, Mr. I don't, I don't feel, I mean, we can go in. I don't feel there's a need to go into executive session for this. We got the letter. It was issued today. Um, it's, I don't know how it's going to change anything for us. And I, I just assumed, just go ahead.
Unfortunately, we have a motion and we have a second. I'm sorry, Ryan.
You got it.
Okay.
Roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Moy?
Nay.
Uh, Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Nay.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Nay.
Um, Councilmember Pounds?
Nay.
Councilmember Streepman?
Nay.
Mayor Carroll?
Nay.
No executive session?
Okay.
Okay, back to our which was clarification on amendment for everybody, including
I believe, if I'm trying to remember what Councilmember Buchanan said so nicely, was that his amendment was, that Councilmember Moy's amendment was to revert back to the city's original beach parking plan.
Okay, very good.
With, with the municipal lot reduced.
Okay.
Restrictions, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Well, can I? Yes, I just want to clarify for, for, for myself and for the staff. Um, so we're talking about two different options. One is opening up expeditiously means not being able to block one side of Palm Boulevard or the Ocean Street, the streets between Third and Ninth, only being able to close the half of the municipal lot or wait, wait longer until the other communities also open up, which as of right now, their date is the twelfth um, for Sullivan's Island. Folly Beach voted today to move to seven to seven through the twelfth, but their entry, their checkpoints are in place through Memorial Day. Or to wait until the twelfth so that we can have time to block Palm Boulevard? I guess I'm a little confused and would like some clarity from, from, from council.
I think I heard nothing but, um, everything's opened up. Except for hack the parking lot at Front Beach. Is that correct, Councilmember Moy?
From a, from a parking standpoint, my amendment was that, um, we, and, and again, I, I, I hope the chief would weigh in if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting him. But what I, what I understand him to be saying is his, his team can adequately enforce the social distancing, um, or at least they can do much more effectively if we lift the restrictions that we placed on Saturday on Palm Boulevard land side.
Yes.
That, can I get an affirmative on that?
Yeah, was, give you a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Yes, sir. You are correct.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And so the motion is, the motion is to get rid of that while maintaining the reduction in municipal lots that was already, that was placed.
Um, just as a suggestion, you know, council may want to consider Just as a suggestion, you know, council may want to consider and, a provision that allows the city, allows me and the chief to, or for the mayor, or to share public safety, for us to be able to quickly revert back. If this just gets, um, unmanageable, um, because we will be the only beach open. So I think that there should be maybe a provision there that grants us the ability to do that.
Totally agree.
At, at whose discretion, the chief?
I would say the chief.
Well, we could, we could call a special meeting, an emergency meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe it's, it would have to be the, the, the will of council, I mean, they, and not, chief's not an elected official, Desiree's not an elected official. The residents elected us to make the decisions on their behalf. And if something like that were to come up, then we will handle it at that time, and you can at that time call a special meeting. I don't think it needs to be written into any ordinance, though.
Just, just to clarify, we're going to listen to the residents?
We're going to listen to our council members. Council member Smith.
I, so just to remind, we're voting on an amendment to the main motion, which I'm not sure if we were going to make any changes along those lines, would probably have to be a separate amendment, I would think. But the main motion is to accelerate the elimination of the checkpoint by the, by Wednesday.
And that was my point of clarification, just so that you're clear, is that right now you're just voting on lifting the parking. Nobody has, we haven't gotten back to the original thing about what accelerate the checkpoint, so something might balance, you know, knock something out, depending on where you go with that. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's vote on the amendment.
Okay. On amendment.
Amendment. All right, so parking amendment. Council member Moy.
Aye.
Council member Buchanan.
Aye.
Council member Ward.
Aye.
Council member Smith.
Aye.
Council member Popsen.
Aye.
Council member Bell.
Nay.
Council member Pounds.
Nay.
Council member Streetman. Council member Streetman.
Nay.
Nay. Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes six to three.
Back to the original motion.
What is the original motion, please?
The original motion is to accelerate the opening of the checkpoint by Wednesday.
Okay, I have a question. I have a question for everybody.
Go ahead. You have the floor?
Um, it looks like to me we're changing our direction a little bit. In that, in the past, we've always said, let's stick together with all the other communities. It's just something I'm bringing up, that it looks like to me we're varying off that course. We've always had the motto, stay the course. And if Sullivan's Island, Folly Beach are adamant about, uh, keeping their restrictions in place, it could be a concern.
Council member Ward, just so you know, all three communities have different regulations as they stand right now.
Well, have you had any indication from Sullivan's what they're going to do after our meeting?
Well, they were watching us, but their meeting started, uh, 15 minutes ago.
Well, we'll be through an hour and a half.
Okay. Any other questions? Council member Pounds.
Yeah, and I'm where council member Ward is, uh, I'm where I am from Saturday night, quite honestly. I'm not, I don't feel like we have a total complete plan in place. I'm not sure I even understand at all the urgency around Wednesday now, given the comment from city administration on, um, where the county is. And again, I'm where council member Ward is, it, this just, we start breaking off, everybody right now is through the 12th for all intent and purposes. That's a freaking week from tomorrow to allow us to get a better plan together. If we want to continue with the parking, but whatever it is, it just feels like we're haphazard to me in piecemeal.
Thank you. Council member Streetman.
I'm right there with councilman, councilman Ward and his concerns, and councilman Pounds, uh, in regards to not having a real coordinated effort between Sullivan's Island and this, but we, we don't know how that's going to turn out. And of course, Folly, we know what they did today. And I'm just concerned that what, if we don't have a good plan in place, we're going to compromise safety and well-being of our residents, number one, and visitors that we have coming out here as well. So I just, I, I share the same concerns that I had Saturday night, and, and the reason I voted for that Saturday night the way I did is because we decided to give the chief the time he needed to put a good plan in place, along with city administration. So, uh, that is my concern.
Okay, is there anybody else before we?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to restate, and thank you, councilman Ward. Consistency across the beachfront communities is, is an absolute necessity in doing this, and rushing and taking the risks that we're being asked to take, the only thing I can say is I'll be able to look in the mirror and feel good about it. And anyone that wants to watch potential rise of COVID on this island because we took your responsible actions, you're accountable to yourselves and to the community. I just, I don't understand how we are given any consideration whatsoever to being the only beachfront community to open, in particular, when the county park lot's not open. Uh, you, you know, to the points that have been made, people are going to come here regardless. We're going to cut the number of parking in half that we have in our city lot and social distance, not have a county lot open, and ask people not to come to this community and spread out because they're going to get a $50 ticket. That's not a plan. And, and I, you know, I encourage council members to listen to our residents, we've been hammered on this. And it's not about disrespecting the other communities, I welcome them back. But I also don't want anyone leaving here with an unplanned event called COVID-19.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody's had their, council member Smith.
Um, a few things. One is that, uh, you know, we have heard from our business community, and while I do not think that it is a realistic plan to allow everybody who comes through the checkpoint to say, I'm going to a business. This is a way to help our business community, but that's not the only reason for doing this. I think that we are also hearing from members of our community who are telling us that they want us to open up. Obviously, there's a range of viewpoints and lots of strong ones, but there are many people who are asking us to open up. The other beach communities are not consistent, and we haven't been on the same page with them for a few weeks now. Um, and I, I can't read to know what they're going to do once the 12th comes around. But we were geared on, I thought, opening up by the 12th. This cha, you know, accelerates that by less than a week. And our chief is telling us, I think, that we have a plan, and especially if we remove the obstacles of putting in place barriers along Palm Boulevard, that we can handle it. I don't know, and maybe the chief can speak to this. If there's any other details that we really need to resolve to move forward. So that, that's all I have to say. I mean, I am certainly concerned and about, but, but our, our state, our governor is setting the stage for this, and, you know, we can only do so much, and it's time to, it's time to open up to our neighbors in a, in a realistic way.
Chief, would you have anything to add to council member Smith's comments?
No, sir, I, I think she hit it on the head. The biggest thing for us is if we're opening, it's easier for us to open on the police department and address all the issues if there's not the parking plan that we initially talked about.
Okay, I, I'm going to make one comment myself. Oh, Ryan, go ahead. I'm sorry, council member beginning. I can't hear you. He's on mute.
There it goes, got you. My, my comment is, while, um, you know, we had the meeting Saturday, we had our, we had our meeting Saturday because the governor came out and announced that he was lifting the restrictions. He was lifting the stay-at-home order, he was lifting all those, it was voluntary. He, he lifted the stay-at-home order for the entire state, and he lifted the short-term rentals for the entire state. He, he opened up restaurants for the entire state. He, he, there was no caveat or anything that 29451 was exempt from his order. Um, and I think the other neighboring communities, Sullivan's Island, Folly Beach, I just, I, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what, what's going to come with that, but, um, there, there, we're going to have issues if we go.
Anybody else?
Uh, one last comment.
Yes, sir.
We have always taken the lead on this, and the other communities have seemed in the, in the recent past to have followed suit. It's my experience, and, uh, if we go forward with this, I just hope we'll all just stick together.
I'd like to make two comments before we vote. Number one, beach rentals are going to be opening, so people who can pay to come to the beach can come to the beach. Whereas Charleston County residents, you know, are being stopped. Charleston County Sheriff's Department has offered their full assistance in helping our police department. Um, I have nothing else to say. I think everybody has had more than an ample time to say their piece. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes, sir. Council member Pounds.
Nay.
Council member Streetman.
Nay.
Council member Bell.
Nay.
Council member Popsen.
Aye.
Council member Smith.
Aye.
Council member Buchanan.
Aye.
Council member Ward.
Aye.
Council member Moy.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes six to three.
Thank you very much. I believe, according to our agenda, we are, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.